Good evening, everyone. It is 7:15 PM on Wednesday, April 13, 2022. And this is some government action, and I now open that committee of the whole, and we'll start the roll.
Obi?
Here.
Ellis?
Yes.
Nancy?
Here.
Gaken?
Here.
Catchman?
Here.
Lawrence?
Here.
Mackey?
Here.
Morrison?
Here.
Ferratini?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Taylor? Shay?
Here.
Thank you. Thank you. Tonight, we have two guest speakers. One is joining us via Zoom with a quick little update. But we're going to start out with Chrissy Nguyen, who's joining us here from the Quinnal Nation Enterprise Board. Welcome, Chrissy.
Since last time I was here, and so. So I'm trying to go through the presentation to describe the program that we're building. Some of you have already heard this information, so be patient. And then I wanted to give you an update on the construction. And I have sent you to Paloponte, or you can now. So the Quinnal Wellness Center, as you all know, is on your street, not too far from Denny's, and then the way out. As we all know, opioid epidemic throughout the country, we have a disproportionate impact in Grace Harbor County. It consumes primary services from EMT services, DR services, police, fire, and. It impacts our ability to provide quality care to everybody in the county. We have limited access to services. I know we have some tribal members that travel as far as diploma to get these services. And I'm sure there are community members that think. One of the major issues to recovery and staying in recovery is needing a lot of support services. And finding those support services located to where you can easily access them is difficult in this county. Transfertation, it requires a lot of patience for referrals and coordinated care, which oftentimes is very difficult. You know, in addition to getting that coordination and finding the services that you need in this county, which are difficult for you, just being able to drive to a facility, having a car, 75% of these clients who need the service don't have a driver's license. And in addition to that, many of these people who need services have children, don't have a safe place for their children to go. And so they can't get to where they need because they can't with their children. And so, you know, we needed to address these health disparities, we needed to address these barriers to care, access to care. And, you know, the Quinnal Nation is committed to providing them services, not only for our tribal membership, but for the community as well. Next slide, please. When we took a look at this problem, we realized that we could not do this on our own. And that building a clinic within the reservation would not address the problem as a whole. You know, we don't live in a, in a box. We come in and out of the reservation. You know, this is a problem that we have to tackle together as a community. So the question was, why Aberdeen? Well, it's certainly located. Access to health care is even right, it would be even right. And no matter where you live, no matter how rural you may be, you should be able to access quality care. And, you know, that's the fundamental reason why we built this clinic. We can't solve this problem alone. We need partners. And, you know, there are severe health disparities within this county. I myself take my children to a pediatrician, but not even in the county. My OBGYN, for when I have my children, is in Olympia because I couldn't get one here. And it's far too often, these kinds of conversations, these kinds of decisions are made. And when we don't have the resources, a vehicle, yeah, like, to go get those services out of county, your health outcomes are going to be negatively impacted. Next slide, please. So, one of the things we talked about with the City of Aberdeen when we initially started talking about this clinic was that, you know, the City of Aberdeen has invested, they've made a plan to have this entertainment corridor downtown Aberdeen that, you know, they want, they want to be able to attract tourism, a nightlife, a little bus downtown that has successful businesses. And one of the great things about our clinic is that it offers 6 AM to 4 PM Monday through Saturday. And so that evening nightlife, we don't impact that. And one of the key things about our building is, it's a showcase. We made this building beautiful. We took one of the most derelict buildings in the, in the city, and we're making it beautiful. You know, that building sat empty for quite a few years, four or five years, I guess, maybe longer. And it really wasn't very pretty. And when we're done with it, it's going to be beautiful. It's adorned with our Northwest Coast art. And it's just going to be something beautiful that will really upscale the downtown corridor. Another reason why we're in the City of Aberdeen is that we're close proximity to access the services for our clients. We've got some partners. And we also want to provide quality care for the entire county. And our facility is located to the majority of the population in this county, and that's why we're here.
Next slide, please.
So our program. Is a program change. We should learn what is different about our program. So this is a no-singled facility. This is a facility that's specifically designed to remove barriers to care. It's a whole person care in one building. It ensures accountability and follow-up care. It's modeled after a successful D W L E trauma center, which is in Annapolis, Washington, so we're going to try one of those facilities.
This one?
So our program will be an Indian health facility. It's a federally qualified healthcare facility that provides services to the young public in need of substance use disorder services. It can only serve its residents in Grace Harbor County, which is in Depperson County, that's part of our reservation, and some people don't contribute to the county. Now, there was some concern by community members that we should be giving clients from, you know, the bigger population cities, bring in here the services in our clinic. And that's just not a reality or a possibility. This is a home thrown for our people who need services within this county, not 13 counties, not Mason County, not Hurst County. This is specifically for Grace Harbor County. Outpatient services only. People don't stay the night here. They come in, they get their services, they go home. The program. So this is the MAP facility, medicated as just a treatment, Suboxone, Dibetrol, Methadone. We provide primary care, dental care, behavioral health, substance abuse counseling, group counseling, family counseling, case management and social services, referrals, life skills training, child care onsite, transportation services, and a professional security team 24 hours. You know, what we found is that one of the, one of the biggest pitfalls to not staying in recovery is you don't have coordinated care. You go up to a primary doctor and they prescribe you something for pain that isn't going to work with your addiction services, and you relax. Or you go to a dental office and you get dental care. And they prescribe you something that you shouldn't have in a, in a treatment program. And so you relax. And so having that primary care, that dental care in that facility allows us to do coordinated care that works with your treatment services, that keeps you in recovery, that keeps you in the program, that you're not going to struggle or relapse. And so that's why those, those services are in that clinic. Now, these services, like, it passes pretty regularly whether or not anybody in the community can come get primary care, dental care. So they cannot, only people who are in the program for substance use disorder services can get their, their medical care in that facility. Another thing that they do is family counseling. So I think everybody in this room realizes that substance abuse disorder is a family problem. And that when children are impacted, spouses are impacted, they also need counseling. And so we provide those services within this clinic, trying to put an end to those generational patterns that we see with substance abuse.
Next slide, project benefits.
What this county has gained, we're going to have 16 high-paying jobs to begin with. And we're looking to services, a long-term strategy for the opioid epidemic, 24-hour security onsite. We're going to revitalize the downtown corridor with that beautiful building. We're bringing a program with a proven 77% success rate, keeping people in the program and recovered. And hopefully, we're going to see less deaths of opioids in this county. So looking forward, the Wellness Clinic, I think we probably have been in and doing buildings at a worse time as far as supply chain issues go. I thought we managed to save pretty good on time. We expected to have construction completed in August. It looks like we're not going to be complete with construction until July. We're just not being able to get some electronic panels, medical panels that can make our clinic due to supply chain disruption. But we should be opening training staff in July and opening in August. We're looking at building some transitional housing within the Quinnal Reservation to serve our people. I encourage the county to figure out some transitional housing because, you know, when clinics like ours started operations, what they found was the people who did drop out had housing in the city. And so when they put in transitional housing for their tribal members, the dropout rate for their tribal members went to pretty much zero. And so transitional housing is a key to really helping everybody. But, you know, that's something that you'll have to think about and figure out higher than, higher than you thought. So we are currently hosting physicians for the Quinnal Wellness Clinic. We have hired a COO, Bill Bond. He should be starting within the next Thursday. We are interviewing for a chief medical officer. I think we have an interview in person next week with a gentleman for that. We'll bring him on board. We have a long list of, next slide, we have a long list of opportunities that are available at the clinic. And I encourage anybody who wants to know more about that to call the tribe and ask for marriage genome. So a look at our building. Next slide, is there's our pretty building. Not so pretty. Next slide, please. That's what we're going to look like when we're done. Next slide, please. That's what we currently look like. I already think a lot better than what it was. A slide, interior rendering of the gallery. Next slide, interior conference rooms. Next slide. The primary care area. Another waiting area. Child watch, child watch has a separate entrance till we can come in. Stay, have fun while the process is over. That's what we mean. Next slide. So this is the D W L E trauma center. That's to be modeled by program after. If anybody wants to check them out, they're online. It's a great program. And the county that they're in, the city that they're in, is very grateful for their presence. And they have had some problems with our clinic. It has not been well for everything. Next slide, Janson Crowns Tribe is building a facility just like D W L E. They may be open now. They've been very close to opening in the last month. So there are also another facility you could, you could gather a little bit more information. Next slide. So our commitment is more than collaboration with the city, the county, service providers and key stakeholders to develop the program. We want to be open and transparent with our communication. We're committed to improving the health and welfare of the communities addressing health disparities within Grace Harbor County. We're committed to partnering with the City of Aberdeen, Grace Harbor County, to help in a manner that improves our community. One of the things I forgot to mention is transportation. So we provide transportation to the clients that don't have vehicles. We pick them up at their house, we bring them to the facility, they get their services, we take them back to their house. So there is no loitering problem at these facilities. As a matter of fact, loitering isn't allowed, that's why. I want to thank you for your time. Especially because I wanted to allow opportunities for questions.
Were there any questions for the council?
Well. From shelters? Yeah, we'll talk to them from shelters. I, I don't know that, be able to pick people up from under a bridge.
Whatever, second question area. And my second question is about your. If, you guys have a number of challenges on your. Single family. A single family. But you know, the model is planned.
Yeah, so we plan, you know, we haven't finalized the plan, but I can tell you what fundamentals we've built in our model. We'll be very familiar to their. Fundamentals have built a six-person female home, a six-person male home, and a four-unit family.
Is the same as one for you?
Four units per family.
I have a question. There's one, they probably were lawsuit for opioid medical lawsuit that's going on. And there's a chance that all cities in certain size, and I think Aberdeen qualifies, we signed up, might get a little bit of. The, the, the way that we have to use that, not use it to get it, is for drugs, the way the problem, and services to help. So is that something that if, if we were so fortunate, is that we could transfer that or services for extra help? Do you organize?
We definitely will, would be happy to partner with you on, on project to figure out the best, our highest investments of both funds.
Yeah.
We definitely will, we'll work with.
Great.
I don't have a question. I just want to share that I've been excited about this project since almost three years ago, I think, when it was first shared with us before some of the interruptions that came along. And I'm just sorry that one of the added stresses to your project is some of the social media that takes place that I heard you in your presentation trying to address without, without the cackle head on. And thank you for that because I just, my view has been a very transparent project. And please don't worry about social media because every time I've tried to find an answer about your project, it's been readily available. So thank you for keeping information updated and available. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Are you delayed with the treatment center that's at the, the old hospital?
Uh, no, you're not.
I'm going, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. I think your project is fabulous. One of the, the huge needs that Grace Harbor has is for psychiatric services. Will your facility have a psychiatrist onboard or accessible to your patient population?
I don't believe we'll have psychiatrists. We'll have psychiatric nurses and behavioral and clinical dependency counselors, but not necessarily psychiatry. Unless, of course, somebody applies that also has a she.
And would you know if EMDR is a treatment approach that might be an option for your patients?
I'm very familiar with EMDR. I actually went through a intensive five-day cancer session last year. I hope that we can offer that service. We're still designing the program, but yeah, it's highly effective. And it's actually an amazing project that's evidence-based and proven.
Thank you very much.
Chrissy, not seen any other questions from council members. Thank you so much for giving us an update. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda for guest speakers is Barbara Nidus. And Barbara is joining us remotely via Zoom tonight and is the Public Information Officer for the U.S. Small Business Administration. And Barbara wanted to share some information about some upcoming flood assistance deadlines that are approaching. So Barbara, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Hello, everyone. I just want to share the screen so I can at least show you the fact sheet. Um, I don't know if you can see it. Can you see it right now, everyone? We're good?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So the deadline is approaching, which is April 18th, Monday. And this is for basically the disaster that happened January 5th to the 16th, the winter weather and flooding. This is the reason why we're here, for low-interest government loans for businesses of all sizes, homeowners, renters, as well as nonprofit organizations. And that also includes places of worship. So for homeowners, we offer up to $200,000 to repair or replace real estate property. And, and also $40,000 for anything that's inside the home, so anything that was also automobiles, that's also included. So it can be, as be your primary residence, now your secondary home. But if, if you use your secondary, this is the only exception. If you do use your secondary as a business, your home, then it considers it like a business disaster loan. So for businesses, oh, for the renters' part, they all, they also get, this is their, this is what they get, is $40,000 for personal property. That's also to repair or place their damage there. For businesses, we offer up to $2 million. That's also for, you know, anything for real estate, mini, supplies, inventories, missionary, and also equipment. For, we also have the economic injury disaster loan. So if we, if you were do, you were closed during that timeline, January 5th to the 16th, and you suffered economic losses, this also is a working capital loan, and this will help business stay in business in the future. So we also offer that for businesses and also nonprofits. That's the same thing. And that's a different deadline, which is never, November 15th. So for businesses, for nonprofits, also it's up to $2 million. The same thing for physical damage is April 18th. And for economic injury is not November 15th, the same thing. As far as we do cover, so the interest rates, this is right here, which is as low as 1.43%. And for businesses, this is low as 2.83, and for nonprofits is 1.87. This is a 30-year, up to 30 years, these loans, they covered the underinsured and the uninsured losses. So anybody who has suffered, they can at least, you know, at least see what their options are. And as far as if they do not want the loan, at the end of the day, they do not have to get the loan. They're not obligated. So that's why I suggest, see what your options are, because we do offer mitigation. So future disasters, at least you can have that, you know, option. So it's a case-by-case basis on that. And also relocation. If you are in a flood zone area, you're able to relocate. We offer that option as well. So there's three ways to apply. They can also, it's disaster loan assistance dot SBA.gov, which is on the bottom right here. And also 1-800 number, which is 1-800-659-2955. So if they do have issues applying online, they can have that customer service number. At least they can assist them through the online process. So if any other questions, if you need from me, that's really what I want to sum up everything. At least everybody has that option. If they do need it, it's available to that deadline. After that, it's very difficult. So that's why I suggest everybody needs to get it going. It does take time. So if you have any more questions for me?
Any questions for Barbara?
I have a question. What was that for?
Oh, it's 1-800-659-2955. And online, to apply online, which is disasterloanassistance.sba.gov. And the timeline is January 5th. People that were damaged, January 5th to the 16th. That's the, that's the, that's the people that can apply. So it's Lewis County, including, which is Grace Harbor, so all the surrounding counties.
Barbara, thanks so much for coming tonight and sharing this, these deadlines and the information.
No, thank you for having me. I just wanted to at least have everybody have that option, since a lot of people don't know that, you know, it does become an option. They don't need to accept if they don't want it. So it's there. So let's just see what they, you know, what they offer for everybody. At least it's there. They have that available. Thank you. Have a good night, everyone. Take care.
Thank you. If anyone wanted a copy of what Barbara was sharing on the screen, you can shoot it over to Jeffy City, and she can get that to you.
Yes, I will email everybody if you need me also as a option.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next up here is our department head report. If there are any department heads wishing to share anything with public tonight, you can raise your hand. Is anyone in the audience? I'm looking, but I'm not seeing anyone with a microphone or wave their arms around on view. So I will hand it over to Mayor Shay for the mayor's report.
Well, I just have one thing tonight. I went to Pacific Loop, Lutheran University. We were awarded a banquet. Put on by the Scouts of America. And one of our very own police officers, Jeff Weiss, was awarded the William Page Spurgeon Award for outstanding service for our community with Explorer. And the Explorer Program. And all the, well, almost all the explorers were there. There were some that couldn't, but they didn't have to either. But yet they were, and they were all in uniform, and it was fantastic. We were very well represented, thought of for our presence there. But this is an outstanding award. And as you all know, I'm a big supporter of the Explorer Program for the long term. And uh, as you all know, I'm a big supporter of the Explorer Program for a long time. It's a uh program of uh kids from our community, well, kids. Fifteen to twenty and twenty-one, fifteen to twenty-one. They uh this is an outstanding program that he can send all the law enforcement job to be a law enforcement officer. It's one of those. They learn good quality principles to live by. It's just really a great program. So the city of Aberdeen through the last few years has uh supported this program with a bipartisan and certainly feel that we've made a great investment here. It's so good for for kids. We have, right now, I think, there's one, two police officers that came to our Explorer Program that work here, Dad. Well, there's four. Well, I knew there was more, but there's more outside city that are working in these programs. So it's, it's an awesome deal. I'm happy and congratulate the Austin boys. And that's it.
Well, thank you for sharing that. Are there any outstanding committee reports tonight from council members? One, looking on something. I think councilperson wrong.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to share that I attended the museum board meeting last week and they're um looking forward to getting started on working with the collection. And also there's um plans are in the works to get the collection moved to our new building as soon as possible. So we're exploring those options. Also, last night I attended um the regional fire authority meeting and I think we're all in agreement that we want to explore all options. So staff will be working to get some ideas put together and we'll be meeting again next month to explore where we go from here. Thank you.
I, I need to point out that that's not our official background.
My, like, council members can work on their vacations now. Any other updates from council members? Seeing that, last, adjourned the committee of the whole meeting and I'll hand it over to Mayor Shay.
Thank you. Uh, this is Mayor Shay. It's Wednesday, April thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. At seven fifty P M. And I call the Aberdeen City Council meeting toward local.
Obie?
Here.
Ellis?
Yes.
Francie?
Here.
Gaken? Catchman?
Here.
Lawrence?
Yeah.
Mackey? Morrison? Perchini?
Yeah.
Ross?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Taylor? Shay?
Yeah.
Mr. Mackey, are you with us? You can see him.
If you top someone will acknowledge that.
Ken.
Mayor Shay, I would like to make a motion tonight that you'd um help with this. Second?
Thank you. Also say, Secretary, you've used Councilmember Taylor to turn to me. Seeing that, all papers say aye.
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 Any vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. You've done that. He is with us.
I know that.
I'm back.
Thank you, sir. So uh, Councilmember Deacon, you're the newest council member. When you lead us in the black seat tonight?
Yeah.
I could do that last time.
I found you there during the meeting you were going to.
This is my actual house. Shout, say, open.
Oh, no.
Mayor Shay, I'd make a motion here for the minutes from the previous meeting.
We did two meetings.
Also made second to approve the minutes of the previous meeting and meeting for that. Is there any discussion? See none? All papers say aye.
Uh, aye, aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do you have any additions or additions? Okay.
We have in addition uh to do the appointment for the members of the homeless committee. So I would make a motion that we add that as a special agenda item under this is like on your reports and communications. Oh, appointment. That's where it goes.
Okay.
Do you need a second one?
There's a second.
Second.
Also made seconded to add uh few special agenda items under point that the uh homeless and well, that's actually Scott. For the committee. Any, any discussion? Hear none? All papers say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is public comment. Public comments are included during Zoom video meetings. Public was notified that they were speaking during meetings and emailed the city clerk at aberdeenlaw.com and indicated they would like to speak with how to comment. If they desire to comment, if they will be uh called on during meetings and allowed to speak for three minutes. The city of Aberdeen requires that you provide a full name and location if you reside in Aberdeen. If you do not reside in Aberdeen, you're not aware of where you live. Moving forward after tonight, public comments and all public will no longer be read by the clerk. If you want to comment at a public hearing, you can leave your hands on the Zoom video or attend a present speech at the podium. All written comments are provided to all the city council members and will be read into the record. Deputy City Clerk, we know for the record any public comments that
I have three written public comments submitted. They're all in reference to the fireworks. So they'll be read during the open public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to anything that's on the agenda? You can come out to the podium. See none? Move on to finance.
Mayor Shay, our agenda only shows one public comment. Are you planning to do a second one?
Yeah. Yeah, I was thinking we, we're going back to that one. We could start off. So with that said, being who's known on the agenda, any comments, anyone that I see can come up to the podium. Doesn't necessarily have to be something on the agenda.
Hello. Hello, my name is Doug Warren. I put on this event um a couple of times. It's called Rainbow in Aberdeen, and I'd like to do it this year on July twenty-third. And um part of the uh one roadblock we have is that we're we can't charge admission for which would be the alley because then in roads. And I just asked the council to consider sending inside that order that day if possible. Just uh this event isn't like Art Blocker, an event that can rely on managers. It really is a very expensive event. And hard, I mean, there's plans. The rest would be from our ticket sales. So um it's kind of a new event that you've got like many streets and elements for you to come talk and and tell them how we do it so they could replicate our event. So it's a wonderful opportunity for our city. It's a new event. It's not that I really like this anymore else. So I'd like somehow we can set them. Both. And all right.
Is there a
We have very hard time getting there. So uh many of them, we had like six of them. There's no way that six could come for a
Can you charge the badges?
We don't right now. Yeah. Yeah, it's a late night event, which is unusual also. And I'm sure that at the event, uh, except steam in the future and getting bigger than we'll have.
Doug, I have on my desk in there. This is very important. I was just, I just dug it up and started looking into it, what we can uh do about it. So I'm researching that right now. I suspect that it was, it's antique.
I was told that it was there. It worked.
Yeah, that well, at one time there was uh a theater on just about every corner. And the, the rules were a lot different to keep order at that point. And I think this portion of this ordinance probably goes back to those days. Uh, like I said, it's antique. So I'm doing a little research on it now and looking into this to try to get some to the council members as quickly. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Doug.
One minute. When is that event?
It's July twenty-third. If I can just also say, uh, we were planning to help the back to spec as one of our role models. We literally all that is going to let us use the tiny space. We can't move for that.
Is there anyone else I would like to speak on?
Don has a question.
Don, Matt, you have a question or comment?
Yes. Is there any way that we can improve the audio for us zoomers out here? I'm getting very little of, unless you're not in the mic, we don't hear you.
I agree.
That's what my other ones, other people think say.
Very difficult, very difficult to hear anybody.
Anybody or anybody in particular?
Anybody in the council chambers, we cannot hear you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay. We'll move on to finance.
Thank you, Mayor. The finance sorry, the finance committee met tonight at six P M. And um I, I would um like, I recommend that we approve the expenditures.
Motion was made seconded to approve the expenditure, expenditures and payroll. Is there any? Is there any comment? See none? All favor.
That motion to approve counts payable in the total of one million, seven hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars and eighty-eight cents. And payroll in the total now of eight hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-three cents. Check numbers two, five, four, three, six, two, two, five, four, six, three, seven, six, eight, eight, zero through seven, six, eight, eight, one, seven, six, eight, eight, four through seven, six, nine, eight, seven, seven, six, nine, eight, nine through seven, seven, one, one, zero. And wires thirteen, twenty-six through thirteen, thirty-nine and thirteen, forty-three. Obie?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Francie?
Yeah.
Gaken?
Yeah.
Catchman?
Yeah.
Lawrence? Mackey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yeah.
Perchini?
Yeah.
Ross?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yeah.
Motion approved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, we have a report from finance and the Parks Director recommending that the city council authorize the mayor to sign the production agreement with Pyro Spectaculars North Inc. For the Splash Fireworks Show in the amount of thirteen thousand, six hundred dollars. I move we adopt this report.
Thank you. Motion was made seconded to adopt this report. Is there any discussion? See none? All favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Was there any, anything else you need to hear else?
That is um that's it for the finance committee at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works Committee Chair reported to council member Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor. Public Works has one item on the agenda tonight, but before we get to that, I wanted to share a couple of things that we talked about in our meeting underwriting. Um, one of the things, I hope all the council members and the council were able to see the press release that went out about the roundabout. Which after that year's long working preparation, construction and um, you might remember that we cut all the water that contacted the project. Um, just for information, just please note that F Street and Four Way and a portion, it will be mostly closed and a portion of the market and uh and um will be down to one lane. And there'll be more need to work if someone has work progresses. So we're just all have to be flexible and understand that this is a transformative project that we've been planning on for a long time. And thanks to patients and grants, eight percent is local and the rest is other subjects. So it'll be um very, very well designed and I'm looking forward to it. There's more information on the website if you didn't see the news release. And we didn't have much on the agenda, so um the director Sander and um engineers spent some time updating on this, the newest projects. And I don't want to take up too much of your time, but just so you we get a picture of the sheer volume of work that our staff is juggling. Let me just kind of give you a rundown. We're not going into too much detail of the project that we discussed yesterday. We've got the roundabout. Uh, the former gun store is slated for demolition for the transit, um transit, um expansion. The US twelve, um redesign is fully funded for design and right away activity. So they've been really working on right away activity. Um, the disinfection system at the treatment plant, uh, high roll coordination upgrade is in the works. The Fairview Slope Stability Cover Replacement Project is in the works. We've got a bench drive pump station that's going to be replaced. Bridge lighting is um going forward. Uh, we have a timber sale that will be coming to us shortly that they're going to ask us to approve. They've been waiting for the right conditions. We've got more projects, but May is a target for loans, there'll be an R F Q and other things coming to us to look at. They are working on an operations manual for the treatment plant to bring it up to speed since we have some turnover down there. They want a more recent manual. We've got some storm projects, number one is the North Shore Levy, the Fry Creek Pump Station, we're going to be advertising for construction, opening that in May. And that's not even in the draft of list, so there's a lot going on. With all that in mind, instead, there is a Saturday, April twenty-third is being satisfied. Our public works staff is offering a tour of the facilities. And there's, we could have, the public works commission first dibs on the tour. Everybody accepted, so we could have up to two more council members. Anyone who is interested should contact Rick Sanger. And if we have more than a quarter, this could be certainly willing to be scheduled another time. If one wants to tour these facilities, of course, there's a lot going on. And it's million dollars, because these are multi-million dollar projects that are going to be coming to us on the other end of the public safety and housing bill. So with that said, I will move on to our agenda item, which is, this is the date set for the public hearing to consider vacating. Become lot six, lot one, other height and parcel number three, one, seven, zero, nine, zero, three, three, one, zero, 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 section zero, three. Count six seventeen, M, seven, nine, W, dot, W, M. And this has been a plan on full life of our city and I will be open to the public.
Second. Motion is made seconded to go over the public hearing. Is there any discussion? See none, all favors say aye.
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 Can you oppose? The jury's public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, come up to the podium.
Shane, I'm ready for the public.
Second.
Second. Okay. Motion is made seconded to.
Okay, you must be fun, did I do that wrong?
No, I didn't. Motion is made seconded to close the public. Any discussion? See none, all favors say aye.
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 Oppose? The public hearing is closed.
There's all of them.
Thank you. Good report on the public works. Because it's kind of a dope around here that anybody can see him walking down the hall, fourth brick. He tries to run out the back door because he's got so much going on. I thought he'd keep good notes so I don't hear him anymore. Poor guy. Okay. Moving on to public safety, the chair report, that's number rocks.
I'm going to defer to Vice Chair John Mackey. I think.
Well, I'll start this time with my mic on, that usually works better. Anyhow, we had our public safety meeting this evening. And I have Deputy Chief Staton here and Chief Hubbard here. And they're all going to do their speaking for me, so I don't have to stumble all over. So Tom, Mr. Hubbard, would you start or would you, Mr. Dayton, you want to start? With the report?
Yeah, thank you. Public Safety met at six-thirty tonight. I had provided meeting minute notes to the Public Safety Committee. Just to recapture what we talked about, we talked about the fire service specialist activities for the month of March. Once again, a very busy month for her and her outreach to the various homes as far as home safety inspections, fire, smoke alarm placements and so forth. Then we reviewed the March twenty-twenty-two call volume for the Aberdeen Fire Department. It's a very busy month and we've had an uptick in structured fires. We had one this morning, but that will go on, on April's report. We then reviewed a comparison of call volume for January, February, March for twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two, showing a fifteen to twenty-three percent increase over the last three years with call volume. I'm just driving home the point that we're looking for solutions to fix the system with the amount of work that we're experiencing on a, and a very steady increase in that call volume. And then we reviewed the March twenty-twenty-two cosmopolis fire impact on the Aberdeen Fire Department. And I provided those notes. What wasn't in the notes is a reminder that next Wednesday at six-thirty is a council workshop via Zoom where T C A Architecture will be presenting their final project for the fire station design and feasibility study. So that'll be occurring via Zoom. And the PowerPoints have been sent to all the council members and the feasibility study is on a shared drive. And I'm granting access to those as I receive requests. And that was the fire department's report tonight.
I have a question. Putting that into perspective, it seems to me that doing the math in my head, the amount of calls that we had through the month works out to about twenty plus calls in a twenty-four hour period. You do.
Yeah, we, we typically say we average ten to fifteen, but lately we've been doing twenty plus. And it's not unusual where we're running twenty-five to thirty calls a shift with, you know, EMS calls, fire assist calls, fire calls, and then a lot of public assists. And that's part of why we're looking for augmenting our personnel. And it's a service I don't want to do away with. I don't see how I can, but people who have fallen or injured that need help, people that need help from their house to their car, from their car to their house. We're doing those all day long, seven days a week. It's a service we provide. It's one of those things that that's what your fire department does. And yet it's not captured in the call volume and it's taking rigs out of service. It's cutting into training time, it's cutting into everything. So all of those things are a service we provide that seem to be lost on when we're talking about the impact to the service that we provide. So, you know, do we do away with that? How long do you, do you want your mother to lay on the floor before someone can come help? Or if you're mobility impaired, I'm dealing with that right now with a loved one. You know, how do you get them to a doctor's appointment? How do you get them downstairs? Those are all things that the R F A Committee addressed and that we have talked about. So we're, we're going to move forward, we're going to see what we can do. But your system is at a breaking point. So, you know, I've been saying that for three years. We'll just, we'll keep working on it and trying to figure it out.
You muted, John.
I'm really batting one hundred at that. Were there any further questions for Chief Hubbard? I mean, none. Next we have, and I'm going to give a shot at this, there are no items on the public state agenda for the police tonight. Chief Shoemate is out of the office until April twenty-fifth. Deputy Chief Staton, Staton will be overseeing the department in his absence. And number three, airing city council has no, not already received it. The twenty-twenty-one A P D annual report will be coming out soon. Council members will receive hard copies. The general public will have access to it through the police department's website under the annual reports tab. Excuse me. The chief will provide additional comments at the April twenty-seventh city council meeting. The V I Ps for the month of March, our V I Ps contributed one hundred and twenty-five point five hours with a total of two hundred and ninety-three point five hours for the year. On March twenty-eighth, Aberdeen Police Department held our annual volunteer appreciation dinner. Most of our V I Ps, V I Ps were able to attend during that meeting. The following awards were presented. V I Ps, Kevin James, one hundred hour service award has two hundred and thirty-four total hours. V I P Doug Zimmer, two hundred and fifty hour service award has had four hundred and four hours. V I P Julie Swor, two hundred and fifty hour service award had four hundred and four point five hours. V I P Carol Winter, two hundred and fifty hour service award had four hundred and forty-four hours. And V I P Catherine Powell, five hundred hour service award had six hundred and seventy-four hours. And don't forget that the National Volunteer Week will be April seventeenth to twenty-third. Does, Officer, I mean, I'm sorry. Chief Staton, have anything to say to add further?
One thing I would add is, one extra thing, one added, we do now have a K nine narcotics dog, Randy. Slater. Randy Slater has a K nine narcotics dog, named Zero. Both of them just graduated from the school and are certified. Randy's already been out on patrol utilizing the dog and has had success. We're going to actually assign her for a few days up to the drug task force so that she can work with them to get some more work in. And then she's also going to be available throughout the county, so that's part of a kind of an agreement we have with the other agencies. As we use their dog on occasion here, we're going to also offer our services of our dog to assist them whether it's on search warrants or different traffic stops that maybe they have where they have suspicion of our products or in the vehicle. And what I will say about Zero, the dog, is a high drive dog. And our dog came from a rescue out of Port Angeles. We're trying to get dogs from, they look for dogs with high drive and this one clearly has that. So we're very excited to have her out and be utilized. Any questions? Yes, sir.
What kind of drug?
It'll find heroin, meth, cocaine, and, no, no, because of that fentanyl issue. But yeah, heroin, cocaine and.
But aren't you allowed to allocate that under a certain amount?
Yeah, personal use, yeah, so.
I don't understand the personal use.
And what, what you have to establish is something more than that for personal use and they're in sales. So in other words, they have acting or they have scales, different things like that to show that it's not good for personal use. They are what they are. I, I don't have any. Well, I can explain that to you if you want to step out here. I'll go exactly where I'm going. I would be going back to do that.
I don't understand.
Yeah. Well, of course, we didn't, we didn't pass that law.
Okay. Let's move on. Thank you. Is that everything, John?
I believe that's everything. Thank you.
Move on to special agenda items.
Special agenda items, under reports and communications, first we have a report from the Parks Director recommending that the city council approve the accession of numerous items donated by Thomas E. Hill into the city U B M collection. I would like to accept this report.
Motion is made seconded to approve this report. Any discussion? See none, all favors say aye.
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 You oppose? The public hearing.
And under ordinance, we have the second reading and public hearing this evening of bill number twenty-two dash zero one and ordinance relating to the use of consumer fireworks. Amending section eight point zero four point one eight zero of the Aberdeen Municipal Code and adding a new section eight point zero four point three three zero to the Aberdeen Municipal Code and providing an effective date. I move that we open the public hearing.
My second.
Motion is made seconded to open the public hearing discussion. See none, all favors say aye.
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 Any oppose? Motion carries, public hearing is now open on this, on the fireworks site. Anyone wishing to speak, please come up to the podium.
The year, and bringing this ten eight class lecture. When I'm in the doors and talking to residents, the number one complaint that I heard was about discharging fires within the city. More people complaining about fireworks than about crime or homelessness or any of the other issues. Universally, people wanted for sure a ban on. In reading bill twenty-two point, twenty-two zero one, I find that doesn't change anything in Aberdeen Municipal Code particularly except to lay the decision whether or not to ban fireworks solely to the lack of the may. This unitary hours, the subject for another discussion, but that bill does not address the issue with the citizens of Aberdeen and the city. The way the bill is written, it seems to me the city has sufficient excuse never to fall for a ban. Even though I'm not councilor anymore, I'm still a hearing term people asking for a complete ban on fireworks in the city. I heard far too many accounts from residents regardless of political status. What was psychological and other mental trauma being caused by the explosions of fireworks. In addition, people told me about the trauma to their children and their pets for the same cause. The residents of Aberdeen certainly have a right to enjoy evening's spree from hours of multiple explosions, not unlike that of a war zone. The city's residents certainly have a right to be free of the trauma and the damage that those fireworks can cause. And even more certainly, the rights of people to be safe and secure in their homes and on their own property supersedes the privilege of a corporation or a person profiting once, profiting once a year at the expense of those people's safety and security. I love the place upon the police force, which is already several officer short, but it should be this extra burden imposed by this or any other law. But the residents are, the residents are well and truly, who are well and truly distressed by the hours and indeed days of explosions and other noises from fireworks should not be required to wait and hope for a precipitate heat wave and drought to possibly be the cause for consideration by the mayor of a ban. That's entirely insufficient. We, myself, those who I represented, and those who will continue to contact me, urge you to come up with a better, more comprehensive bill that accomplishes what the people want. There is sufficient precedent and there are models on which to base this legislation. Timing to me, yes, but it is not typical. And to be absurdly proud about this, the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few who have a want. Thank you for your time. That's it.
Thank you. This subject that's on the agenda is about, well, last year we had a drought, intense and extreme heat during the. Well, last year we had, uh, a drought, condition and extreme heat during the July fourth. And there was a lot of concern about, uh, the safety at them, so. We looked into what we can do about it and the city of Aberdeen could not. Uh, whole, um, uh, same vote, they tried to, uh, create a city ordinance. On the spot to, uh, um, call an emergency and control all fireworks. And legally, they could not do it because they didn't have it on books sufficiently. And that's all this is about. Making it so that we can call, uh, an emergency ban to fireworks if a condition like that happens. So banning fireworks altogether like Mr. Ridgott was pro- 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 striving is, uh. Another topic that we talked about. There'll be more talk about it, but, uh, this particular ordinance, uh, that we're reading tonight is just. Given the city's authority to call an emergency. Prohibition on fireworks based on, uh, extreme conditions. Anyone else?
And we have Mr. Jason Trout with us on Zoom. We'd like to speak. Jason, are you here?
I am.
Go ahead, sir.
Counsel, my name is Jason Trout. I'm with TNT Fireworks. Uh, I was, um, commenting tonight just to talk about the ordinance at hand. And talk about what some of the other municipalities have done. Um, I agree, uh, and my company agrees that, you know, this past summer was extremely dry. And giving the council or the mayor or someone, you know, the authority, uh, in times of drought. To ban the sale or the use or both, um, is probably the best way to go. Uh, the only thing that I'm asking is that you guys have some sort of, uh, scientific criteria that would dictate that. Um, many of the municipalities around Aberdeen, uh, and in the state of Washington, uh, have set up criteria that. Frankly, it takes the power out of the mayor's hand and the chief's hand if it reaches a specific, um, level of drought. Uh, you know, within the city, then the city council can either vote. On, you know, banning fireworks or the mayor can, can declare an emergency and therefore, you know, ban fireworks as well. I'm just asking that you have a scientific criteria for that rather than, you know, just some perspective from some member of. Um, you know, uh, the city council or the fire chief or the fire marshal. Um, it, it really, uh, takes any questions away on, you know, whether or not something should be banned. Uh, if it meets that certain criteria, then that's what happens. I really appreciate your time tonight. Um, if you guys do have questions about, um, you know, what some of the other municipalities are doing or what some of those criteria are. Uh, I'll be happy to share, uh, several other municipalities with you. Uh, and in regards to, you know, a total ban, you know, people want to celebrate the Fourth of July like they have for, you know. Since, uh, our country's birth and, you know, to take away fireworks, um, that people have used forever. Um, you know, to celebrate our freedom, uh, you know, just, just seems like a very extreme. Uh, thing to bring up. I also think that, you know, there are also compromises. Um, people are scared of the big bones and they're scared of aerial fireworks. Certainly couldn't limit it to, you know, a certain type of firework that stays on the ground and isn't loud, so. When the council readdresses that, I'll be happy to talk about what other municipalities have done in that instance as well. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
We have three submitted written comments. Dear Mayor Shane, City Council members of Aberdeen, my name is Aria Alexandra. I live in Aberdeen Ward Five. And I am writing to express my full support of a fireworks ban in Aberdeen. As well as the upcoming bill which gives the mayor the authority to do so. We all know that our fire department is already stretched painfully thin every year of various holidays and forgive me for being blunt. But on and around various holidays in Aberdeen, there are countless idiots that set off enormous amounts of fireworks with no regards to safety whatsoever. I believe it is a dangerous and outdated practice to allow fireworks to be freely shut off or sold within city limits to the general public. Just driving down the street in Aberdeen on the Fourth of July feels like being in the middle of a war zone. Of course, those who delight in explosions do not limit themselves to setting off their arsenal only in the evening of July fourth and New Year's Eve. The danger to public and private property through accidental fire, the danger to children and others who are not qualified to handle fireworks. The general lack of oversight and the dangerous consequences is an enormous and wholly unnecessary risk to our community. Why take the chance of a child losing their hand or fingers or another house burning down when the majority of cities today do not allow private fireworks within city limits? There is no need for private fireworks in Aberdeen when our tax dollars are already funding public professionally done fireworks displays every year. In addition to the risk of physical damages subjecting all Aberdeen residents to many days of random explosions creates a disturbance of the peace. Trauma for our veterans and those suffering with anxiety disorders and as any pet owner knows severely terrorizing our pets. Causing many cats and dogs to escape from home in fear. This is an unnecessarily creative problem that takes the resources of our already overburdened police department, animal control and local shelters. To try to manage for weeks afterwards. The city is also stuck with the cost of cleaning up Morrison Park and various other locations for days. Where the small but obnoxious minority of the public that engage in the practice of setting off fireworks never bothered to clean up any of the mess they leave behind. For all these reasons, I believe there are a huge number of negatives to allowing unregulated fireworks within city limits. Which are serious threat to public health and safety as well as a burden to our limited city. Resources. On the other hand, I can think of no positives to allowing private fireworks within city limits. That are not already met by the carefully controlled professional displays we pay for in an appropriate location, which families are free to enjoy without endangering their neighbors. Or disturbing the peace of at all hours. Thank for, thank you for your thoughtful consideration to this matter. Aria Alexandra Ward Five. And, dear mayor and counsel, I understand that you're addressing the subject of exploded, explode, excuse me. To them, it signifies danger. Other pet owners have told me their pets react in similar ways. I have no problem with the big public displays or non-explosive neighborhood fireworks like sparklers and others that don't make noise. Thank you, Barb Schillinger, Ward Four. Public comment number three. Please consider banning fireworks in the city of Aberdeen, except for the public displays that are safe, professionally done and enjoyed by all. We have too many shake roofs in this area, dangerous for fireworks. They are an annoying nuisance to old people like me. They're very hard on pets. The fireworks debris is often not cleaned up. Thank you for your thoughtful debate, Barb Gurney, Ward Four.
Is there anyone else who's to speak on this? Let's go, let's, uh, close the public hearing then.
I move we close the public hearing.
My second.
Motion is made and seconded to close public hearing. Any discussion? This ordinance is not about stopping sale fireworks or the use of fireworks in a normal. This ordinance strictly gives us authority to respond to an emergency situation. That's all this is.
Can't hear Councilman Gaken at all.
Aye.
The public hearing is closed.
I make a motion to accept the second reading of bill number twenty two dash zero one.
My second.
Your time is up.
Okay, where were we? Motion was made and seconded to approve this second reading. Be none, all favor say aye. Motion carries, second reading has been approved.
All right, and if you're appointment, I would, Mayor Shane, you have some important appointments to make.
Yes, um, this.
I can't hear anything at all.
Almost too loud, bruts. Um, the, the city's putting together homeless committee and I wanted to announce the council members. Are going to be appointed to that committee. Pretty much everybody volunteered to be on that committee. So we had to make choices. So the committee will consist of Katie Katzman, David Lawrence, Liz Ellis, Casey Morrison. And at large, Debbie Parachina. Uh, we're speaking with Astrid Abadito. From the Center for Dispute Resolutions to be the facilitator of the committee. So, uh, thank you council members for volunteering. Like I said, I think pretty much everybody volunteered to be on this, so. And, and then also we'll have, uh, during our meetings, uh, any city staff that's necessary. To join in with us. Thank you. And that's it. I'd like to ask for council approval.
So.
Second.
Thank you. Motion is made and seconded to approve of this committee.
So out here in the sixth ward hinterland, we had asked permission for me to be an alternate to David if this was in the end, is that a first?
Need the motion? That's invited by me.
Do I need to amend anything? No, I just want to make sure it's okay if David asked me to some, there's no, there won't be any.
The, the selection process was made by, uh, picking, uh. Somebody from each city committee, from each city committee. Apparently to have someone from Ward Two. And, no, this is the. Any other, it's, uh, all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you.
Is all for special agenda items.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, the city council comment. Anyone on the council that we comments, council president.
Yes, mostly just housekeeping items, but like Chief Hubbard said, there will be a remote human workshop. On April twentieth at six thirty. That's what I told Casey, yes, regarding, um, the fire department facilities planning. Um, we also received back the capital facilities plan from Rock Creek Project Management. And so Director Barnum, um, believes that, uh, we should hold a workshop as quickly as possible to run through that. So looking at available dates, there's an opportunity to do this on, um, May fourth. And again, on May four, on May eighteenth. So I wanted to see if council had, um, an opinion about either of those two dates so we can get one of them on the calendar. And I'll process this by saying that on May fourth, I will be traveling and I'll leave in the air during the time that this. Workshop would take place, so somebody would probably be to facilitate on my behalf. But happy to yield if you want to go with that date. Does anyone on the council have an opinion regarding those two?
I'm available either day.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, so I, I will make a motion that we hold it on May eighteenth then, at six thirty.
My second.
Motion is made and seconded, that workshop on May eighteenth. Any discussion? Be none, all favor say aye. If you had it on the fourth, you could have said stuff like, May the fourth. Anything else? Uh, council member Ellis.
Yes, um, April is a mighty busy month. It's a month designated for recognizing volunteers who are so important to, um. Keeping our communities beautiful and helping city staff. And, um, helping in their neighborhoods and, um. And many dedicated people in our community give hundreds of hours and, um. And just a, a shout out to, to everyone who contributes some of their time to helping others. It's also Earth Month and I'll probably speak to that more at our next council meeting. But then it is delightfully recognized as Poetry Month. So I wrote a little poem that I would like to share. Came to me this morning when it was raining and snowing outside. Poetry in the wind, in drops of rain, the pulse of the day starts first in my heart. And becomes epic as the day builds with many miracles. So have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.
You and us on the council, like council member Shaw.
Just a couple of quick things. Um, we all got an email about some information that Director Barnum needed from us and ordered to complete the applications in the historical society. And I'm thinking we all must have got it in or would have come up tonight before this, so hopefully we're all good to go on that. And the other question I had that, um, that's coming, um, that I was curious about, come, asked about it a couple months ago. Where, where we're at on our salary survey when we thought that information might be coming back. There's a workshop on that.
Yeah, this, this year.
April twenty seventh is the workshop.
HR Director, what's here? See her on.
Danny.
Oh, there's Danny. Oh, I don't see her on my, so I see her. Danny Smith, are you, uh, available there?
Volume maybe can look.
It's our director Smith. Well, anyway, uh, we're pretty far along with it and have it pretty much complete. There's a couple of questions on there that, uh, HR Director Smith had. And the subject this year at the, uh, at the meetings that he's signed up for is that, uh, we'll answer some of those questions. So she's been holding on until she gets that information. Uh, so, but I think it's, she's scheduling to have it out as fast as she can get it, so.
It's a guest speaker too.
Okay, anything else? Councilmember Ross.
I move we adjourn.
Time passed.
Motion is made and seconded to adjourn. If there's no opposition, I will adjourn this meeting. We are adjourned.